I got the canceled one, but I think you know what happened? So when I, I yes.
So I had put that. Figured out what happened. When I answered yes to his, it took it off.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 6:00 PM and we're going to gavel in the regular school board meeting of Monticello District 882. Please rise if you're able and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which is stand one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have our tentative agenda and at this point in time, we will approve our tentative agenda to be the agenda for the evening.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And the agenda approved six zero. I would like to take a moment to talk about citizens' comment. We have two types of citizens' comments this evening. If we have regular citizens' comments, which I don't think we do, that would fall at this point in the agenda. And then we have our truth and taxation hearing tonight, and we will have open comments for people who have registered at the back of the room with Devaney about the truth and taxation, and that will fall under seven B on item seven B on the agenda. We will have the opportunity for members of the public to have comment on citizens' comment. So I will just double check one more time with Devaney. We don't have regular citizens' comments this evening. Okay, moving on to item number six, we have a closed session summary from our previous meeting. We had a closed session and I'm going to read the summary. It's about a minute and a half or so long from that. This is a summary of the closed session of the board, which occurred on the 18th of November 2024. Proper public notice was made for a closed session of the board to conduct the mid-year superintendent goals and evaluations by the Monticello School Board District 882. The session was planned as a closed session as permitted by section 13D point oh five, subdivision three A. The superintendent was given the option of an open or closed session and requested a closed session. The board spent a total of 59 minutes in consultation and closed session with the superintendent. The evaluation was for the purpose of determining the mid-year progress on the 24, 2025 superintendent goals. The regular annual superintendent evaluation will be conducted in May or June of 2025. This is the second year of the 2023-2025 goals cycle, which will conclude in May-June of 2025. The superintendent performance expectation for priority goal areas were reviewed from the annual evaluation that occurred one April 2024. The four goal areas we will discuss. Number one, student academic performance and the discussion summary. Student academic performance was reviewed in detail with the most recent Minnesota comprehensive assessment data. While the 3% improvement goals in reading and math scores were not met in a number of cohorts, Monticello academic performance continues to outpace state averages and significant declines are not present. Progress continues to be documented in small incremental amounts. Goal area number two, student attendance discussion. Superintendent Olson discussed and presented attendance data for September and October 2024 for elementary, middle, and high school students with comparison to end of the year data from spring of 2024. Superintendent Olson presented detailed attendance interventions he has directed for development, which is based on a national best practices model from UC Davis. The superintendent highlighted positive attendant rates for our alternative learning program, which was recently relocated from an off-site location to new spaces within the high school. Goal area number three, district safety and security. Superintendent Olson reviewed upgrades to building security. He conducted a brief discussion of proposed future building security modifications. Building safety teams continue to meet regularly. Safety plans are distributed and reviewed with all staff, including substitutes, and transportation safety and parent concerns were discussed with new school start time transportation schedules. Goal area number four, strategic plan discussion. Superintendent Olson presented several working areas. The first is incorporating the special education co-op into the current district strategic plan, including plans to direct the implementation of regular performance evaluations for all co-op staff and improved professional development plans. The superintendent articulated the need for an audit of the ELL program in our district with the development of improved professional developments, training for ELL staff. The superintendent continues to work with his cabinet administration on the organizational chart and expressed that he is anticipating presentation to the board in January of 2025. The superintendent also discussed that he is leading a panel of three superintendents in the search process for a new director for the Wright Technical Center. The current Wright Technical Center director is retiring at the end of the 2024-2025 school year. Performance recommendations. Overall, the board is satisfied with the progress and process of the goals implementation by the superintendent at this mid-year point. The board expressed deep appreciation and gratitude for the efforts of the superintendent and all of his staff. And then the final document will be signed and has been presented as a draft document already to the superintendent. Moving on to our consent agenda items, we have approval of the minutes from November the 18th, 2024, and personnel matters combined. Members receive these up to a week in advance and have the opportunity to ask additional questions as needed. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing done, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as posted, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. And consent agenda passes six zero. Moving on to item eight on our agenda, collaborative connections. We have a resolution for acceptance of gifts, and Superintendent Olson will discuss those gifts.
All right, we have two gifts to bring forward here tonight. Faith Bible Church, Live Like Gina Foundation is bringing forth $500 to our Monticello High School Unified Club. Bexley Herald Hannah for a reverse walker, a device used for students with needs valued at $2,000, and it supports students' physical needs. So two great items coming forward here tonight today, and hopes that we continue to accept these gifts to improve the life of our students.
And we have a resolution.
Therefore, be it resolved by the Monticello School Board number 82 to gratefully accept the following donations. Faith Bible Church, Live Like Gina Foundation, $500 for the MHS Unified Club, and Bexley Herald Hannah for the reverse walker, helps supports students' needs.
Second.
Resolution read by Jeff Heckley, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor of accepting the donations as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And the motion for donation passes six zero. Moving on to item B, truth and taxation hearing, we're going to welcome our business director of business services Tina Burkholder to the podium, and she is going to give us a review of the taxation situation for this year.
Thank you. Yes, tonight we have our truth and taxation hearing, and with this, our agenda will go over the meeting requirements that we are supposed to cover, look at our current year budget, look over the proposed tax levy, and then allow for public comment. So with the truth and taxation law, all taxing jurisdictions, cities, townships, counties, school districts must hold a truth and taxation hearing anywhere from November 25th through December 26th at a regular scheduled meeting at 6:00 PM or later. So tonight is our hearing. It requires that we present our current year budget and also discuss our proposed tax levy, look at the increase or decrease from the previous year, and then go over specific reasons why taxes are being increased, but in our case, we'll go over some decreases. And then, like I mentioned, allow for public comment. So unlike cities and counties, our budget year is different. We have our fiscal year starting July 1, and it goes through June 30. So our budget is approved six months after a levy is approved, and we typically do mid-year revisions starting in January. So the levy that's approved tonight will actually be for next year's school year budget, the '25-'26 school year. Like I said, because our budget lagged six months behind, we'll go over the current year budget. So with school districts, we have to have separate funds that designate different monies according to state law. So this is our list of funds that we manage. We have our general fund that includes our special ed cooperative activity. We have our food service fund, community service fund, which also includes our hockey fund when the state looks at our information, debt service fund, internal service fund, and OPEB or other post-employment trust fund. And the funds that I highlight in yellow are the ones that actually receive property tax money. So for the general fund, it's about 18% of that revenue coming in is property tax money. Community service, about 9%, and debt service has the most, about 90% because that is where we have our bonds, and that's mainly the property tax money coming in to make those payments. So this table is just a very overview summary of our budgets for next, for this year. We're spending down our fund balance a little bit in our general fund, food service, and our OPEB trust fund. The other funds are hopefully increasing their fund balances a little bit this year. We have a more detailed budget report on our website if people wanted to dive a little deeper in our budget. We also have to submit a budget form and publish that in our paper. It is due on November 30, so this was in the paper last week on November 28. The next couple pie charts have our budget by fund. So the largest piece of the pie is our general fund budget. It's our main operating fund that has a lot of our activities in it. And again, that includes the special ed cooperative and a similar view on the expense side. The general fund is the main operating fund. Just diving a little deeper into the general fund on the revenue side, our biggest chunk of revenue that comes in is state aid, 77%. This pie chart does not include the special ed co-op activity. This is just revenue that applies to Monticello School District. The next largest piece is local property taxes, again, about 18% of our revenue budget. On the expense side, we're very labor intensive. Our salaries and benefits are about 80% of our budget. Moving on to the property tax levy, so a couple of basic things to cover. The state is heavily involved in the process. They set the formulas and the policy and the tax rate that's involved in this calculation. The levies are driven by enrollment counts, specific eligible expenses, population, voter proof referendums if schools have any pass, and property valuations in the district. Another thing to keep in mind, just because the tax levy changes doesn't mean our budget changes. There are some equalizing formulas where it's probably budget neutral to the district, so we'll have a case in that where we might get more levy but less than state aid, but overall, the revenue impact to the district is the same. Taking a look at our timeline, so in the summer, school districts start to enter in information to the state. In June, we give three years of enrollment estimates to the state. In August, we start to input retiree cost, unemployment costs, leases. We go back last year and put it in our actual cost for leases, then we put in proposed costs for the next year. We have some questions regarding community ed. Are you going to have a early childhood program? Do you have school age care? And then you have to review your tax, your bond payments as other examples of things that schools have to review in the summer. And then the state has by September 8 to compile all that information, do all the formulas, take the valuations, and hand out reports on their website to school districts, about a 40-page report of calculation and summary of all those calculations. Then September 23, we went over the proposed levy and approved the levy to the max. November is a time where school districts could hold referendums. We didn't have any referendum elections this year. Mid-November, proposed tax statements are mailed out to property owners, and then again, we have that budget form I didn't put on here that we have to put in the paper. December 2 is our truth and taxation hearing, and the next board meeting, December 16, will approve our board levy. We could approve it today, but we always approve it on the second meeting in December. And then the following, the calendar year, is when we collect the property tax money that is being approved. Looking at the timeline for taxpayers, January 2 of 2024, property values are assessed by the counties. In March of 2024, people are receiving their preliminary valuation notices. In the spring, early summer, people have a chance to go to the county or other boards to appeal their valuations if they feel it's not that valuation. November, again, if there's elections, people can vote. And again, November, they are receiving their preliminary property tax statements. The preliminary property tax statements, if there was a referendum that passed, it wouldn't be included in that. And then from November 25 through December 30, that's their chance to go to all the truth and taxation hearings, you know, cities, township, counties, et cetera. And then March of 2025 is when people will receive their final tax statement that would include if a referendum passed, but in our case, we didn't have anything. Looking at the proposed levy for next year, it's decreasing 1%, or about 157,000. Next couple slides has a little bit more breakdown of the levy. Our general fund is going down 131,000 or 1.2%. Our community service fund is going up 4% or about 16,000, and our debt service levy is also going down 1% or 42,000. And just taking a look at a couple of those major changes, our voter approved referendum went down 160,000. Our voter approved referendum can be used for general operating expenses. The reason for the decrease is last year, our referendum is, has an inflation factor, and the state uses estimates. And so they trued up what the inflationary factor should have been, and so we had a bigger increase last year versus smaller increases for this year. Our operating capital went up 60,000. This is one where more of the increase came on the levy side and less came on the state aid side. We still get about a million in our operating capital, so nothing's changed there. It's just how we're getting that money. What's the form of aid? Our reemployment or unemployment levy went down 50,000. It's for unemployment costs. This levy is based on actual costs, and so if costs are less than projected, the future levy will be reduced. So for the levy payable in 2023, what I estimated was higher than what we actually paid in '22-'23, so the state trues up and takes and makes that adjustment. And finally, the reduction excess fund balance had a decrease of 72,000 in our debt service fund. These funds are used to cover delinquency and tax collections, so school districts have to levy 105% of their bond and interest payments, just in case people aren't paying their taxes and there's delinquent tax revenue coming in. So on a positive note, people are paying their tax bills, and so we're getting property tax money coming in. And then the state looks at our fund balance. If it gets too high, they adjust it down through the reduction of excess fund balance. The composition of our levy is pretty much similar. Last year is about 39% of voter approved referendums versus 61 local or calculations. Next year's 38-62 split, so again, pretty similar compared to the prior year. The impact for taxpayers, so many things can cause the tax bill for an individual to increase or decrease. It could be the change of their individual property value. It could be the change in all the value of the property in the district, or it could be some increases or decreases in the levy. For example, voter approved referendums, if something was passed, that would increase the tax bill. So Lers, our municipal financial advisors, put together some graphs that might show what's happening in our district. They use different property values where the values haven't changed, and then they took that same property values and used an average of 21% over those four years in property value. So if property values did not, would not change, people would see a decrease, and this is hard to see. So with the graphs, we're looking at 150,000, 250,000. You would see a decrease, and that makes sense, you know, if the value is decreasing, we're getting more in state aid versus levy. And then here we have 350,000 property example and a 450,000 property example. Next, it would look at what if people saw an average of 21% in property value over the next couple of years, starting with 2022. It had a 12% increase, then an 8% increase, then a 0% change. So there have been steadily increases in the property tax levy and then a slight decrease going into 2025. And again, the same property examples, 150, 250, 350, and 450. And just to illustrate kind of the property value impact, the district levy, you just think about it as a pie, and depending on the property owner and their property value depends on how big their slice of the pie. depends on how big their slice of the pie is. So a higher market value increase would be a bigger slice of the pie, where a lower market value increase would cause for a smaller piece of the pie. And just a very simple example, if our school district had a levy of $500 and two households, they would, and they're both valued at 100,000, they would both split the tax bill, or they would pay 250 of that property tax levy. In that same example, if the gray house or the house on top, their value increased 10% and the red house on the bottom increased 25%, that red house would have a bigger chunk of that pie because their value increased, but the school district is still getting $500. It doesn't matter, if that makes sense. And then I just wanted to put a slide in there about property values. We have referendum market value and net tax capacity value. So the referendum value is basically residence apartments or commercial value, where property types of similar values pay similar tax rates, where net tax capacity has all the taxpayers. So it would include seasonal recreational and agricultural land. So just a point here is that our value, property value, whether it's under the referendum market value or net tax capacity, it is increasing. So we are seeing more in levy and less in state aid, but it'll just be split differently between the properties. And then people have some property tax refunds or deferral programs to go to if they see a bigger increase, but again, I think people will more likely see a decrease on their school property taxes, and they should, you know, consult with their tax professional on accessing those, the homestead credit refund, the special property tax refund, and the senior citizen property tax deferral. Again, like I mentioned, we'll approve the levy at next board meeting. Do I have any questions from the board before allowing for public comment?
Seeing no questions from the board, we will open it for public comments. Are there any registered public comments?
Hello, everyone. I think everybody kind of knows where I am, but I'll just restate, I'm Duselzinski. I had two sons that just graduated a few years back, and I've been with the district a little while here. I just had some questions, I guess generally in the taxation realm here. I was just wondering what the term or length of the referendum that was printed on the ballot and voted on in the people that passed in 2014. What was the term? Meaning, was it a 10-year referendum in 2014? Okay. So it stated that on the ballot as well, so that's what the voters were stating, I'd imagine, as well, so that's what they're... So did it have a renewal clause written on the ballot for that referendum? Meaning, was it going to have ability to be able to be voted on, not by necessarily the people, but another body, you know, if that was on the ballot?
Not at that time.
Okay. All right. So with that said, District 8A2 made a binding contract with the people back in 2014 that was to expire at the end of next year, 2025. It looks, as from what I heard on the workshop a while back, it might be the board's intention to vote at a later date in the upcoming months to renew the referendum by a simple majority of the board and go past the original 10 years, thus breaching that original contract they had with the people starting in 2014. So I asked the board to help the people understand where does the board get its authority constitutionally to break the binding contract they agreed upon with the people in 2014. I take it there any answer to that?
I mean, I would just say it's a legislative change. So I mean, I understand your point of view of talking about the original document, but there have been changes both constitutionally at state level, legislative level, statutory level, over time, and so this is a change that has come that could be taken advantage by school districts, and some already have done that, so it's something that is available.
Did you mention constitutionally it was changed?
No, I'm just saying that there are changes that have made to, like state statutes, that is a process that can come through the organization of government. There can be changes, and that has happened.
So, okay. And I understand that, yes, St. Paul decided to enact something, aspect on that, but I do want to kind of give you guys a reminder here. Maxims of the law, which are true rules and principles of law that have been accepted everywhere. The last, the publication that I use is actually published out of Burnsville, Minnesota, in 1990, so these aren't old things, these are actually published aspects. 5L from that document, which is Weisman, is the express agreement of the parties overcomes or prevails against the law because the agreement of the party makes the law of the contract. And then there's another one, 24R, by a contract, something is permitted, which without it could not be admitted. And I do want to restate the Minnesota Constitution, Article 1, Section 11, the Bill of Rights. No bill of attainder ex post facto law or any law impairing the obligation of contracts shall be passed, and no conviction shall work corruption of blood or forfeiture of the state. So there is a Minnesota Constitution that does talk about ex post facto, which means, even though you said statutory, the legislative came up on that, they can't retroactively act of something that was already agreed upon by the people back in 2014 for our district. So the board is unfortunately breaking the trust of the people when they try to go around the people and transgress against the Minnesota Constitution, because that's what's happening here. So I just, I want to warn you guys, don't let St. Paul or St. Peter with MSBA, district staff, or district lawyers tell the board that they can do something that is very clearly unlawful and will transgress against the Minnesota Constitution, putting the whole board at liability. District had two consecutive failed referendums, which you guys are aware of, over the past four years alone, one in 2020 and one in the following year in 2021, with the same rejection rate outcome of about 65% voting no, showing the intention of the people to keep the district within its means. So the board as a whole is strongly encouraged to listen and obey to the people and do not go down a road that will give the board, as well as the district, negative consequences for taking unlawful actions from misguided servants and agents of government. And I thank you for your time, and God bless you. Good holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Lizinski. Are there any additional public comments registered, Demany? Okay, I'll just leave that open one more time. Is there anyone from the audience that has any public comments? Finding none, we will proceed among, along in our agenda to Item C, which is our 2023-2024 audit. Director of Business Services Tina Burkholder is going to introduce our speaker for this evening. Welcome back. Good to see you again, and we're going to be hearing our audit.
Yes, we have our principal, I don't know what your exact title is, auditor here, Mary Reedy here, from Clifton Larson Allen. We had our audit, we had a couple days, workshop week, normally have our preliminary audit in July, but we're just scheduled a little differently this year, so workshop week, we had them here a couple days, and then also the final week in September. But since then, we've had a lot of back and forth trying to finalize these numbers and some last-minute curveballs from the state with different transportation questions that have come up, but I think we're finally ready to present our final results from last year.
Again, thank you for having me tonight. Today will just be a snapshot. I figure we might as well just bore you with all the numbers we could, right? At least it's just one meeting to get it over with. We'll go through the PowerPoint that we've provided. Again, it follows in suit with the financial statements that we issued, like Tina had said. We usually present the draft, we like the board to see it as questions, and then we'll wrap that up as final with your next meeting. So we'll go through the PowerPoint. Feel free to stop me at any time. Definitely open for questions. Within the documents that were provided, all of our communication is in there as well, so I literally am just going to go through numbers, what happened over the year. Remember, Tina is a year in advance. She was doing 2425, I'm doing the 2324 to wrap up. So here, a little bit hard to see, but this is the general fund. It does include the special education cooperative. Up at the top, you can see far left is 2024, far right is 2020. We like to see a snapshot of about five years there where you've been and where the district is currently at. Down at the bottom, we show budget to actual numbers there. So revenue is coming in at 70.1 million, budget at 69.4 million, a difference of positive 750,000. Total expenditures of about 69.6 million, budgeted for about 69 million, so went over budget there, about 496,000. But overall, you budgeted for a change of net position of about 247,000. You came in at 497,000. It's about 251,000 to the good there. When you go up to the top graph, you can see unassigned fund balance increased from last year. You increased in your staff development, and then you spent down some of your LTFM monies on some of those projects. Overall, your unassigned fund balance is sitting at just over three weeks of expenditures. So if you had no more money coming in, you could operate the district for about three weeks, about 5%. Your annual, your goal is to have at least 6% in there of your annual budget, so a little bit under that. Actually, we'd like a goal of 8 to 16% in there. So right now, you're running a little lean on unassigned.
That's assuming, that's assuming you're including the special ed expenditures. If you take that out, we're more at 9%.
Perfect. Sorry about that. The special ed always throws you a curveball a little bit in there. So good. So then, right just above your goal of that 8 to 16%. And as you can see, your net change in fund balance, positive 497,000. So then with your budget for next year, basically spending, you know, down what you banked this year. So the next page is your food service fund. Here, you had revenues of 3.5 million, budgeted for 3.3, coming in with a positive 233,000. Expenditure is about 2.9, budgeted for about 2.8, so 167,000 actually over budget. So you budgeted for a gain of 515,000, you came in at about 580,000, so positive 65,000. Again, food service fund, very stringent on what you can spend that on, but you definitely will want to spend down some of that fund balance, since you can't have too much in there over the year. I'm sure there's plans to spend that down. The next slide is the community service fund. Again, this includes your hockey fund here. So revenues at about 5.1 million, budgeted for 5.1, came in under budget by about 100,000 there. Expenditures of about 5.2, budget about 5.1, so overspent there, so both of those going opposite ways. You budgeted for a gain of 50,000, came in at a loss of about 130,000. So when you look at those categories up top, you'll see that most of those are positive. Your unassigned fund balance is actually negative 98,000. So within there, you actually have school readiness about negative 207,000. And I do have another graph that coming up that will go into a little bit more detail with that. So this overall, at the top, is your debt service fund. As Tina mentioned, you have to levy 105% of those principal and interest payments. You can see this year, pretty significant loss of 834,000, but when you look at 2021, you gained about 907,000. So again, Tina had mentioned that the state will come in and adjust your levy as needed. That is your adjustment. You're spending down that money that came in in 2021. And you can see in 2021, that did come in from your capital projects fund right below that. Okay. So your next one is just your general fund, unassigned and non-spendable fund balance. Just put it into a chart here, a little bit easier to see. So it went down a little bit in 2023 and then back up in 2024. Here's your restricted, committed, and assigned fund balances. Again, spent down some of that restricted money, as we had talked about there. Community service fund balance, you can see since 2022, you've gone down each year there, about 314,000 total. Next slide is your food service fund balance. Again, looking at spending some of that down this year. Remember, you had free from state and federal, so a little bit hard to judge when that revenue was going to come in, offset with the expenditures that came in as well. Debt service fund balance, we talked about, back down to about the 2020 level there. Here's your summary of the community service fund by each of the categories. See school readiness coming in at about negative 118,000 there, already with a negative 89,000. Overall, your sources of revenues, the difference here is this is all of your revenues coming into the district, so all funds combined. State coming in at about 57%, local property taxes at 17, and then your other local and county at 21%. State is going to be up a little bit from last year, just to change in funding, and then your food service had more state revenue come in for the meals. So this next slide goes hand in hand with that, gives you a bar chart of each of those categories that I just presented there. Federal, this year, you spent about 403,000 at Esser. That should probably wrap up your Esser fund, so you're going to see that come back down again to more levels, about the 2020 level there. State, again, I talked about change in funding there. Overall, in general, state aid was more. Where does that revenue go out? You can see your biggest piece here is regular instruction, and then your special education instruction, kind of where you expect it to be when you look at your district and school admin and your district support services at 4%. I normally see that between 5 and 10, so you're under even that percentage. And here again is the bar chart.
Can you move that to that last slide?
The district and school admin and your district support services, total 4% of that chart. Normally, I see that between 5 and 10%, so definitely operating lean on those two areas. The top two, yes, to the right.
Can I also ask, is the vocational, the red pie slide, is that our contribution to Wright Tech?
It's Wright Tech and it's also our CTE courses as well, the high school.
Perfect. And they said this is the bar chart there. You can see regular instruction and special education increasing there, pupil support services, and then your sites and buildings will fluctuate in any given year, just depending on what repairs and maintenance and things you have going on. So then, how does the district get paid? Your resident ADMs and WADAM, so weighted average daily memberships here. You can see each of these categories did decrease from the prior year. Not surprising, with about 90% of my districts, all of them have seen a decrease in ADMs as well. So then we'd just like to show the makeup of that. If you look down at the bottom, we start with your residents, and then we say your resident weighted average daily membership going elsewhere, so those opting out at 821, that did increase. Then you have your non-residents coming in, that actually increased as well, just not as much as the going out went. So brings you down to the net to that 4,400. So then again, I like to take those two pieces that I mentioned that are at the 4% and compare those, just... just divided by your average daily membership of your expenditures. You can see it went up a little bit from last year, but significantly under what the similar sized districts are doing and in the state as well.
Always been kind of proud of that.
And then total instruction, just about right on with other districts, similar size, a little bit under. So like I said, brief overview, yes. Yes.
See in other districts, looking at the light green and the orange, how do we match up to other districts in those areas?
Pretty similar when you do that. Your pupil support services, sometimes it depends on your coding. But I would say you're probably right in the ballpark of district similar size. I'd say maybe special education, a little bit higher with the co-op in there.
Can you also reiterate what you, the percentage of administrative salaries that's typical that you see?
Five to 10%.
And we're at 4%, and I think that's a really important piece of information for the public, that we as a board have paid attention to that. And we don't have a lot of superfluous administrative roles. Everyone wears many hats and I, I think our administrative staff performs at a really high level to keep that number down, to help us.
Yeah, and is it, is it, are we under or are they below it?
I'd like to think that we're efficient.
We still want to see controls in place, right? So as us, us as auditors come in to ensure you have correct controls, right? Make sure somebody's reviewing, you have two hands doing stuff. From what we can tell, what we've looked at, those controls are still in place and working.
That kind of goes to my statement because you look at the graph and, you know, some people might look at it as like we're under. But I look at it as other districts, maybe they're just loaded and they have too many people in those administrative roles. And that money could be spent more efficiently, more effectively in other places in the district. So I think we do a good job here.
I think it's really obvious when you talk about the objective product that our administrators produce. We don't have advisory administrators, superfluous advisory roles or assistants to assistants to deputies to assistants. We, we have people that are functioning at a very high level in our district.
Perfect.
Any other comments from Mary? Thanks for coming again. You always bring us, oh, Mark's got some more.
I'll note that next time.
Tina sent you a note about that, right? That you had to wear red and black if you were going to be under the big M.
All right, I have a selfless or selfish question. Mary, how did the audit go?
Well, actually, this one goes quite a bit better than some of our bigger sized districts. And it, it does go to show that if you have the correct people in place, things can operate pretty smoothly. When you lose that, you can lose control of your district. So I recommend that you keep your high level staff in positions.
I'd like to thank Tina as well because I think you're very meticulous on how you forecast out and you're very conservative at projecting things out. And I think that helps us to make good decisions for the district and helps our numbers and our audits to come out. Year after year after year, we have good reports coming. So thank you, Tina.
Thank you. And our district office and even, you know, principals or secretaries, you know, when we do ask questions and when we do ask for things, it's not because we want to make life hard and, and the job tough. It's we want to have clean records and accurate information and good controls in place so that when auditors do come in, you know, all of us in essence are getting that glowing review, so. And then just if there's no other questions or comments, this is an action item so that we can have our financial statements go from draft to final.
So is there any final comments, questions, or concerns from the board for either Tina or Mary? Finding none, then we.
I do, sorry, Kathy.
Go ahead.
I was busy thinking about my red and black comment and I probably missed what you said. What is, what is your opinion on the financials? Are we good or are we, are we not?
Yes. A lot of districts have fluctuated quite a bit this year with the new funding. A lot of that is more restrictive. So I think your finance department did a good job at heading that off and being able to spend that in advance. Whereas a lot of other districts built up restricted fund balance and spent down unassigned, which is what you don't want to see because those restrictive buckets are very hard to spend sometimes to find the right expenditures to be able to spend those. So when you look overall, you didn't increase significantly in restricted. You were able to put more of it into your unassigned fund balance. And I have not seen that a lot happen here with other districts. Yes.
That's on the back for Tina.
I think it's just, when you look at, you know, the budget side of the house, it's Tina and Rob are doing a great job of leading that side of the house. And it's nice to know that you have hugely competent people leading that so that we can move to the side of the house that we're more, I'm more familiar with and that's working with students. So it's a, it's a pleasure to be able to hear you tonight, Mary, talk about the side of the house that, that is as important as instruction. Because if you don't have the, the funding side working with the instruction side, you're not going to have a school district. So it's great to hear these reports and know that we're on the right track. And we know we have the right people throughout the system. That's a pretty, that's what I take away today, is pretty smiley to know that we have the right people in the right places.
One last call, any comments or questions, concerns, or compliments from the board? Finding none, this is an action item. We have before us the audit from Ailer for approval. Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving.
The audit is from Clifton Larson Allen.
I'm sorry. Sorry, I got that wrong. Let's start that over again. We have before us the audit from Clifton Larson Allen, not the other group, for approval.
So moved.
By Jeff Hegley. Seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the audit from Clifton Larson Allen? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And our audit passes 6-0, and I'm very sorry for.
Thank you.
Signing you to the wrong company. All right, moving on to item D. We have Superintendent Olson is going to talk about Resource Training and Solutions and their Board of Directors. And we have a nominee.
Yes, Resource Training Solutions is a Minnesota service cooperative, one of nine in the state. The director, Mark Schmitz, recently reached out to board member Jamie Seben to share information about openings in their service cooperative. The service cooperative is made up of school board members from central Minnesota. In this case, our service cooperative is central Minnesota. And it's made up of school board members to make up their board. It's a nonprofit, public corporation, and it provides services to school districts, cities, counties, governmental agents, agencies, as well as nonprofits, as well as the communities they serve in central Minnesota. They train teachers, they improve schools, inspire students, and build safer communities to develop professionals and ensure success. Resource Training Solutions focuses on supporting schools through both academic events and testing measures for some of the school, the agencies mentioned, as well as providing professional training for certified staff and non-certified staff and support staff. Resource Training Solutions provides annual recognition programs and, and very special evenings for both certified and non-certified support staff. And as a leader in the district, just like many of the principals and directors in the audience, we've had the opportunity to attend these events each year and see the impact Resource Training Solutions has in, in central Minnesota. And so I believe it's a great honor to have one of our board members. Jout to, and I am fully recommending because board member Seben has thought about this decision and researched it. She believes that she can do this. I think this is a feather in our cap, just like the slate of prowess that we've prided ourselves on, the school board, being in the school district in, in St. Paul. I think this organization does the same thing in central Minnesota. It, it, it gives us recognition as a school district. It'll be a great honor to look up at that event and see one of our very own school board members sitting there for the first time that I'm aware of in the history of Resource Training Solutions. So I think it's a huge asset and I would propose you moving forward with the resolution that we've prepared here tonight.
I'd like to just extend the opportunity to board member Jamie Seben to talk a little bit about Resource Training and Solutions and your role there. Can you talk about how big the board is and what your term of service would be?
Some of that. And so the terms of service, I voted in. I will be filling in a term for right now because they have an opening and then they'll reelect me going forward. So it mirrors the school board elections. So you have to be an active school board member in order to be on their board. I thought long and hard about it because I was actually nominated through a relationship of somebody that I built in a whole different community. So it, it was surprised me, it surprised Eric as well.
Didn't surprise me.
Nomination. And so I thought about it because it does take time to do. But I think the relationships that'll be built and what it could do, my concern was if I could make a difference and if it would help our district. And so I think there's some things that could happen that could be of service to our district and help our teachers, the, the ongoing education that's done for our district and the recognition that's done. And so that's why I said yes, pending your guys' approval. I will not be voting on.
Questions from the board for Jamie or Eric?
I just wanted to say congrats and thank you for doing it.
Yeah, it's always good to take advantage of an opportunity. So glad to see that you're doing that.
Okay, finding no further comments. We have before us the Resource Training and Solutions nomination form for Jamie Seben. Do we have to do a motion in a second? Okay, we need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of the resolution appointing or approving Jamie Seben to the Board of Directors at Resource Training and Solutions? You say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say no. Please let the minutes reflect that member Seben recused herself from voting. So the vote is five to zero and the motion passed. Congratulations, Jamie. Moving right along. Getting to our safe and healthy culture, we have the Director of Human Resources, Mr. Rob Daniker, with us this evening. He's going to talk about the technology group and the collective bargaining that was recently agreed to. Welcome, Mr. Daniker.
Thank you, Chair Zebra, members of the board. As introduced, we do have a settlement with our technology support unit to report and for action for the board to consider this evening. The, the tentative agreement was reached with this unit on Tuesday, November 12th. And because they're a smaller unit, they were able to turn this around and have a ratification vote quicker than many of our groups because of their size. And so they ratified this on Monday, November 25th, 2024. The, and we are recommending that the board approve this agreement. Essential changes to the agreement are as follows. For year one on salaries, on wages, I should say, it's a 3.75% increase on all cells. There is one deviation from that. We have a new position added to this unit through this, this round of negotiations. And that is the AV tech position. And so that was merged into this unit and the rate of pay was established equivalent to that of the Level One Desktop One position, which already existed within this unit. On health insurance, health insurance was increased 16% for this unit as with all of our units because it's pegged to that teacher rate. $975 a month is the single coverage maximum on district contribution as well. And then on longevity, this unit, this was a really great conversation. And frankly, I just stepped back for a minute. This was a wonderful negotiation, if negotiations can be wonderful. This took three sessions. There was a total of two total packages exchanged between the groups before we got to a settlement. And so we were able to work very quickly, very efficiently. And some of it because of just really creative collaborative thinking. And this longevity piece is one. The unit came with a request to make some significant changes to their longevity model. The district had our own counter proposals. And ultimately, what we settled on was a model that exists currently within the district elsewhere, which is in the custodial maintenance group. And so we simply cut and paste that one into this group. And so it creates some continuity and consistency also for district operations and payroll and things like that as well. So very good there. So the, the change in longevity, it moved the longevity from a flat annual rate to an hourly differential. The majority of employees in this group are hourly employees minus one. There is one salaried employee within this unit. And then it also moved the start of longevity differentials from the 11th year to the 5th year. And I didn't include a third point there. It reduced the maximum longevity contribution as well. So they moved up the start of contributions, but they actually decreased the maximum contribution available to them. So that was the trade off. In year two, wage scale increases 4% on all cells. And then health insurance is to be determined because the teacher settlement is what drives the health insurance rates for most of our units. And of course, that is, that contract expires June 30th of 2025. So any health insurance rate is to be determined off that. So what that means for this group is that they will hold steady. District contributions will remain in place until that teacher settlement is arrived at. And then there will be retroactively, it'll apply to this group as well. In terms of language items, this is a year-round group. And so Juneteenth was added as a holiday for this group, much as we have for all of our other year-round groups. Language cleanup, of course, we adjusted the years of the, within the contract. We cleaned up gender references throughout. We cleaned up hours of service language due to the add of the AV tech position. In hours of service, in that article of the contract, it referred specifically each individual position that hourly employees might have. And so we just cleaned that up and referred to it as hourly employee, shell, et cetera, et cetera. And we also cleaned up references from salary to wage throughout, minus the wage-salary schedule. Again, mentioning that this group is universally on a wage basis, minus one employee. And so we captured that under the wage-salary schedule individually. And so that would, we were able to summarize that very concisely. Memorandum of agreement, because there is one individual who would be harmed by the adoption of the new longevity compensation, we did write a memorandum of agreement into this contract to allow for that person to remain at their current longevity step, which amounts to $2,000 annually. And that will remain in place until either the employment with that individual severed or longevity differentials for the entirety of the contract at that experience level would exceed $2,000 annually. And then finally, notice, we mutually agreed with the unit to reduce the notice requirement from four weeks to two weeks in two areas of the contract. One is for employees resigning in good standing. They would, they would be required to notify the district with no less than two weeks' notice for that. And then the trade off would be employees subject to layoff. The district would be able to share that information with employees no more than two weeks in advance as well. And so a total package over this contract is 9.77 MSBA. For those keeping track, that is slightly above where. For those keeping track, that is slightly above where our teachers and our custodian and maintenance workers settle that, but is lower than our food service and also our ESS settle that as well.
Questions from Mr. Daniker from the board? Finding none. This is an action item to approve the Technology Support Master Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the Technology Support Master Agreement? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And it passes six zero. Congratulations, Mr. Daniker and our tech support group. Moving on to our first reading of policies. Mr. Daniker is going to discuss first reading of a number of policies this evening. These are not up for action yet.
And so we do have nine policies for first read tonight. And again, as Chair Zebraugh noted, these are not for action tonight. And then we do have one policy that moves to a second read this evening. That was a holdover from our last meeting. But I'll start with Policy 205, open meetings and closed meetings. The purpose of this policy is as follows. School board embraces accountability and transparency in the conduct of its business, and the belief that openness produces better programs, more efficient, and less susceptible, I'm sorry, more efficient administrative programs and an organization more responsive to public interests and less susceptible to private interests. The school board shall conduct its business under a presumption of openness. At the same time, the school board recognizes and respects the privacy rights of individuals as provided by law. The school board also recognizes that there are certain exceptions to Minnesota open meeting law, as recognized in statute, where it has been determined that in limited circumstances, the public interest is best served by closing a meeting of the school board. And to that extent, that's why we're bringing this policy back forward tonight. This policy was reviewed by the board fairly recently in October of '24. However, the reason we're bringing it forward tonight is really out of the nature of necessity. And so over the course of the last 12 months, we've had twice where we've had grievances come forward to progress through the process that have reached Level Three of the grievance process, which is typically hearing in front of the Board of Education. And recognizing that we have the ability within law to establish ad hoc committees, but we did not have that in this open meeting and closed meeting policy. And so the grievance committee in this case would be such an ad hoc committee with outstanding dates of meetings. It would be something that would be, the membership would be amended annually, things of that nature. And so we are bringing this forward tonight with some amendments to the language in this policy to allow for ad hoc committees to exist alongside our standing committees, such as budget, policy, et cetera.
I just want to add a bit of information to what Mr. Daniker just said, that we've been in consultation with our law firm over the wording and the conduct and process and procedure for how those ad hoc committees would be conducted and have received our guidance from them. Is there any questions from the board on open meetings and closed meetings? Moving on.
The next one for consideration for first read tonight is Policy 416. That is drug, alcohol, and cannabis testing. This is a policy which the district does not currently have. And that's for two, well, there's two main parts to this policy, I should say. And the first part is the reason why the district has not adopted this policy previously. And that's because the drug testing, the majority of this policy has to do with federally mandated drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers. As we do not directly employ our school bus drivers, it has not been pertinent for the district to adopt this policy previously. However, the second part of the policy does pertain to drug testing for employees. And while the district does not make habit of doing drug testing for employees in general, the fact of the matter is that under Minnesota law, if we were to be put in a position that we were necessitated to provide a drug test towards one of our employees, we could not do so without this policy in place. And so it is pertinent for us to have this in place and in such an occasion where we might have to take that, take that action. Although, again, it's fairly rare that districts would. In addition, I should note that the Policy Committee did add a line in the, under the section regarding school bus drivers, that while the school district does not currently employ school bus drivers, it is the expectation, expectation, excuse me, of the school district that contracted school bus vendors must comply with state and federal obligations as outlined in this policy. Sorry, Superintendent.
And I just want to make sure that people don't feel like we've been, you know, in a vulnerable place. Because our transportation policy itself does have some drug and alcohol testing within the transportation policy. So this just allows it to align on a standalone, just as MSBA recommends. But in our transportation policy, we have had some of the very similar wording.
And also our school bus vendor, that's a commercially, a commercial driver entity. And so they would, they already have the state and federal mandates in place.
Are there any additional questions from the board on drug, alcohol, and cannabis testing? Okay, finding none.
Okay, moving on to the third, which is Policy 425. This is staff development mentoring. The purpose of this policy is to establish a staff development program and structure to carry out planning and reporting on staff development that supports improved student learning. This is back in front of us because of a change in legislation, specifically in terms of district obligation to confer with certain employee groups. In this case, the amended language from the legislation resulted in the following line. The school district must consult the exclusive representative for employees receiving this training before creating or planning the training required under this section. That's in a paragraph specific to paraprofessionals. Title I aids another instructional support staff. As well, there was a change in world's best workforce. That is no longer a thing in Minnesota statute. That label of the world's best workforce has been changed to comprehensive achievement and civic readiness report. So those two changes on this policy resulting from the legislative action.
Are there any questions from the board? Finding none.
Policy 501, this is school weapons policy. Again, we are revisiting this one. This one, actually, we're revisiting because of our review cycle. And so the last time this was reviewed by the board was in 2019. The board has, so the Policy Committee is recommending that this largely remain intact, although we did amend two references to firearms, to refer to firearm or dangerous weapon, just for clarity's sake.
Are there any questions from the board on this policy, dangerous weapons? School weapons? Okay, finding none.
Next is Policy 509. And this one is, again, brought forward because of a change in legislation, legislation, excuse me. And in this case, the legislation was amended to further articulate the rights and privileges afforded to parents and students with disabilities and as it relates to open enrollment, specifically as they enroll in pre-kindergarten and kindergarten coursework. And then what that means for ongoing enrollment in the district after those initial enrollments, as well as there were some deletions of some old legislative references as well later on. So that's Policy 509.
Any questions from the board? Finding none.
Policy 510, student, school activities, excuse me. And so this is, the purpose of this policy is to impart to students, employees, and the community the school district's policy related to the student activity program. We are coming to this one simply because of our review process. The last time this was reviewed by the board was in 2019. As currently constructed, this policy has significant elements related to local articulation of procedures for activities. And because in the interim since 2019, the Activities Department has made their Student Activities Handbook much more verbose and wide-ranging, we were able to narrow the scope of this policy. And so we've reduced many items in it that are, again, now captured in that Student Activity Handbook. So that's 510.
Any questions from the board on school activities? Okay, finding none.
All right, Policy 511, student fundraising. Again, this one is brought forward just through our review cycle. This was last reviewed by the board in 2017. Working with our Activities Director, Mr. Revening, on this, we have some elements that are specific to Monticello, such that, for instance, all fundraising activities related to the Activities Department must be presented to and approved by the Activities Director. And then we also have some language regarding how often organizations or activities can fundraise in an active year. So that is Policy 511.
Any questions on student fundraising? Okay, finding none.
All right, Policy 512. This is school-sponsored student publications and activities. The purpose of this policy is to protect students' rights to free speech and production of school-sponsored media and activities, while at the same time balancing the school district's role in supervising student publications and the operation of public schools. This one is up for review because of change in legislation, specifically around the First Amendment rights that students have as they author materials for school-sponsored media and publications. And so the legislature has broadened the students' First Amendment rights under this area of the law. Previously, school districts had uniform authority when it came to student publications and activities. Now that's, the legislature has attempted to balance that with the First Amendment rights of the authors themselves.
Any questions from the board? Okay, finding none.
And the last for first read tonight is 513, student promotion, retention, and program design. The purpose of this policy is to provide guidance to professional staff, parents, and students regarding student promotion, retention, and program design. This is brought forward because of a change in legislation. We had, the board has recently reviewed this as of April 24. And this is another example of where the world's best workforce was referenced by name in this policy. And now, again, that is called the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. And otherwise, that is the only change in this policy.
Any questions from the board? The board members, these nine policies that are up for first read will be on the agenda for December the 16th for approval. So if you have any questions in the interim time, please make sure you get them to the right person.
Just to reiterate, Policy Committee met right before the board meeting, like we always do, first Monday of the month. And we just spent a couple hours going through all these policies, one by one. So that's why we're so quiet.
Yeah, a number of them had been tabled. So they've been through several cycles of the Policy Committee. So we're more than familiar with them. So moving on to second reading of policies.
All right, so we did have one holdover from our last board meeting. That was Policy 503, student attendance. This one was brought forward because of a change in legislation. And as the Policy Committee and myself and Ms. Deboni Moore worked through the edits on this one, we did miss two pieces that needed amending. And one of the board members was kind enough to highlight that at our last meeting. And so we have corrected that in both cases. We just simply followed our model. We're in Policy 503. We were able to insert some local control, and we just referenced that. Please refer to the student handbook for the specific building for further detail on those matters. So that is the, really, the only changes for Policy 503. And that's up for second read again tonight.
Is there any questions from the board on student attendance? Okay, finding none. This is up for action, so I'm open to a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Mark Branson, seconded by Jamie Seben for Policy 503 as presented for student attendance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And student attendance passes six zero. Thank you, Mr. Daniker. Finding that our agenda is complete. We are adjourned at 7:15, and we will reconvene at 7:25 for our work session. Thank you very much.